The water heater is broken. The water heater is broken. Okay, good evening, everybody. The time is 7:08. The date is Monday, October 23rd, 2023. This is the regular session of the City Council of the City of Pacifica. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Vols, here. Councilmember Beer, here. Councilmember Beckmeyer, present. Mayor Protem Vaterlos, here. Mayor Big Stick, present.
If you haven't placed a parking pass on your dashboard and you're out here in the parking lot, please do so. You'll find the parking passes at the base of the stairs on the door. City Clerk, can we have participation notes, please?
Tonight's meeting is being held in person with alternate ways to observe and participate in the meeting via Comcast Channel 26, livestream on www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream, or via Zoom with the webinar link provided in the agenda, or by dialing into Zoom at 1-669-900-6833 with webinar ID 81156158241. For those participating by phone via Zoom, press *9 to raise your hand to request to speak when the item that you'd like to speak on is called by the mayor, *6 to unmute once called upon by the last four digits of your phone number.
Thank you very much. There's been a lot of craziness lately. We've been talking about a lot of things lately. So I'm going to read this solidarity statement now and at least the next meeting, perhaps the foreseeable future. "The City of Pacifica welcomes all peoples regardless of race, gender, identity, ethnicity, religion, political views, and other backgrounds, and the City Council has made it a priority to foster a diverse and inclusive environment in which all people may express themselves freely and peaceably. The City Council stands united against hate and denounces all forms of hate, racism, intolerance, and violence. The purpose of the City Council meetings is to conduct the important business of the city in an efficient manner in accordance with the City Council rules and code of ethics. The city recognizes that the City Council meetings are a limited public forum and that residents have constitutional free speech rights, and the city welcomes input on agenda items consistent with the council rules and other applicable laws. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rame Tushaloni peoples who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rame Tushaloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rame Tushaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rame Tushaloni peoples." And if we can, please have a salute to the flag led by Councilmember Beer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
No report of election.
That brings us to special presentations.
Mayor, Mayor Big Stick, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. We're getting some extra little audio coming out of the TV. If we could just take one minute, City Clerk Coffey is going to talk to PCT and see if we can make sure that that's turned off.
Certainly, without taking a recess, I'll give it a moment or two to work it out.
Mayor, can you, can you say something to just see if it's still coming out or not?
City Manager, as Mayor of Pacifica, I can say many things ad nauseam, with or without it being pleasurable for the audience at large. As an elected individual, it's one of my many talents. Okay, are we good?
I think so. I think so.
So in that case, I am going to proceed with a proclamation in regards to Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed at various times throughout the nation and the world and dedicated to the planting of trees in our community in order to support our environment and bolster our quality of life. And whereas on October 24th, 2022, the City of Pacifica adopted a resolution in recognition and observation of Arbor Day on the second Saturday in November to maintain membership in the Tree City USA program and show appreciation to Tree City Pacifica for holding an Arbor Day celebration each year in partnership with the City of Pacifica, who purchases and assists with planting of trees. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and create jobs, and trees and their surrounding soil can sequester carbon for thousands of years, thus helping to mitigate the effects of climate change and contributing to the City of Pacifica's Climate Action Plan. And whereas trees can increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas by increasing retail spending, and beautifying our community. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper products and wood for homes and businesses, and wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of Pacifica takes pride in being environmentally sustainable in numerous practices and processes and in encouraging residents to do the same, now therefore I, Tiger Jaws Twirl's Big Stick, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim the second Saturday in November as Arbor Day in the City of Pacifica, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations, done this 23rd day of October, 2023."
Thank you very much. Wonderful proclamation. My name is Gail Benton Shoemaker, and I'm speaking as a member of Tree City Pacifica. On behalf of all of us at Tree City Pacifica, thank you for this proclamation in support of Arbor Day. Pacifica is a Tree City USA, and in order to keep this designation, the city annually presents a proclamation and celebrates Arbor Day on the second Saturday in November. This will be our fifth annual Arbor Day. Citizens and schoolchildren will be planting 30 trees, adding to the city's urban canopy, combating climate change, and ensuring that Pacifica remains a verdant and beautiful city. Thanks to the support from the mayor, the city council, and city staff, future generations will be able to enjoy the many benefits of trees that we plant. If you would like to come to celebrate Arbor Day, please join us on November 11th at 10:00 a.m. at Fairway Park on Cindy Way. It's going to be really fun, and there's a new playground there, too, and trees will be planted around that playground. If you or your family or city council members would like to plant a tree, please register by emailing treecitypacifica@gmail.com. City Council has been fabulous about planting trees in the past, and we hope you'll come again. We hope to see many members of the community there, and we thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Do we have comments from council members?
I already signed up to plant a tree. I think I've been at every Arbor Day and really appreciate the trees everywhere. I went to go look at our tree the other day that we all planted together. It's a little slim, but it'll get there. It'll thrive. So thank you so much for all the trees and just controlling everything that happens with the trees in the city. We really appreciate the feedback all the time. Thank you.
That's what I was going to say, too. Thank you to Tree City Pacifica and Gail. Thank you for continuing to teach me about trees and about the importance of the canopy and how we can work together to do that. I've really appreciated our time together, and I've learned so much from you. So please continue to teach me. I'm here, and I can't wait for Arbor Day.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you too, Gail, and all the Tree City Pacifica members. And I was just so moved last year at Oceana High School and having all the students involved and learning about the benefits in their science classes also, and then being able to see them, you know, grow and thrive in their neighborhoods. And I don't know if you've planted 30 every year, but if you have over five years.
Yes, it's 20 in the community and 10 at the Pacifica School District schools. So the ones at the school district are being planted the Friday before typically. But they are also making curric-- the teachers are making curriculum, and Sue Beckmeyer knows something about this. And so all those classrooms are learning. In fact, some of the classrooms have planting teams, watering teams, and mulching teams, so they understand why mulching is important and the science of sequestering carbon. So it's great that we also have the partnership with Pacifica School District, as well as this big community celebration.
Yeah, teaching the kids to appreciate and honor and take care of the trees, too. But five times 30 is 150 trees. That's amazing, like already in a short amount of time. Thank you.
I was going to comment on the trees that have been planted at my school and students being involved. It's a sixth grade specific project, but the other classes come around and observe and see what's happening. I did want to note that maybe it will be the Monday after this year because there's a staff development day and the holiday that are coming right before. So we'll get to it. I know they're excited to participate.
And we will be asking all the schools to take photos to include in the report that goes to the Arbor Day Foundation for the Tree City USA annual re-up.
And does the, does the school planting also include Jefferson High School District?
It includes Jefferson in that Oceana is a partner. Last year, they were fabulous, the Oceana students, and they're coming back.
Awesome.
They were particularly good as staking teams, and so we're looking forward. We welcome volunteers from all the schools, but we have since last year established a partnership with Oceana.
Nice, great. Thank you.
Very much looking forward to Arbor Day. I've really enjoyed being there physically planting a tree the last two years. I'm grateful for the opportunity and looking forward to being there this year. As a personal aside, I have been looking forward for the last couple of years of purchasing a lemon tree for my own backyard. This year, they had them in stock, and after I purchased this lemon tree, I felt like there's a chance I might actually not kill it as I was planting it because of the skills I've learned planting trees through Arbor Day over the last couple of years through Tree City. So thank you so much. This also gives me a moment to reflect on the symbiotic relationship between the energies of the cosmos, as the sun is widely held as being the source of our life, and also the trees that must receive that in order then to provide life in all forms for us, the multitude of which were listed in this shiny piece of paper, of course, which is a piece of tree flesh.
We do hope you'll read the proclamation at the Arbor Day celebration.
I would be absolutely delighted to. I think we'd like to get a picture with you as the representative of Tree City before you head away.
Okay. Can I ask Marge to come join us? She's a member as well.
Certainly. Okay, so that brings us to our next presentation.
Mayor Big Stick, before we move on, we're having Zoom issues currently, internet connection issues. So we are currently not up on Zoom, but we can continue with the live meeting if you wish or take a recess to try to resolve the Zoom issues.
Through City Attorney?
I feel so small.
We can, as the City Clerk mentioned, we can continue with the meeting because we have all five council members present. And it's Zoom necessity is only required when we have a council member who is participating remotely. So the City Clerk's question is related to whether or not you choose to take a break to see if it can be fixed so that those watching remotely can continue to watch, but we don't legally have to stop the meeting in order to allow the Zoom to be fixed or to be connected.
And so are we still broadcasting through PCT while Zoom is malfunctioning?
Yeah.
It looks like we may not be, but I'd have to confirm that with PCT.
Well, and even if we weren't televising via PCTV, we would still be able, I missed the quote, we could still continue with the meeting.
At this point, I appreciate the legality. I do want to make sure that the community has the opportunity to see the special presentation, even if it's after tonight's meeting, that it'll be rebroadcast. I want to make sure that the community has that ability, so. So we are taping it. Okay. So if we're taping it, we'll continue on with the presentation. I might give us a recess at the consent period so that people can make comment for items of business. So then that does bring us to the City of Pacifica Youth Advisory Board, or YAB, presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members, Bob Palacio, Director of Parks, Beaches, Recreation. So I have the great honor of bringing up our Youth Advisory Board members. First, I'd like to recognize Lexi Macario and Anthony Shriver. They are the people who provide support for the Youth Advisory Board, and they do a great job. We are super fortunate. We've got 11 members on our Youth Advisory Board. Seven of them are here tonight, and they're going to present to you. We're super excited about that. And I just want to say that the future of Pacifica is in really good hands. These are some amazing young people, and we'd be fortunate as a city if they remained here in Pacifica and stayed here and became our future leaders. So with no, without further ado, let's bring them up. Go on up, you guys. And they're each going to introduce themselves as they give their, their part of the presentation.
Yes.
Hi, thank you so much for having us here. We're all really excited to be here. Yeah, okay. Hi, my name is Ellen F. Takari. I'm the President of the Pacifica Youth Advisory Board.
I'm Calvin. I'm a sophomore at Terranova.
Hi, I'm Jake. I'm a senior at Oceana High School, and I serve as the Secretary of the Youth Advisory Board.
Hi, my name is Madera. I'm also a senior at Oceana High School, and I serve as the historian of the Youth Advisory Board.
Hi, my name is Adriana. I am a junior in high school at Cappuccino High School over in San Bruno.
Hi, my name is Ty, and I'm a senior at Sarah High School.
Hello, my name is Alex, and I'm also a senior at Sarah High School.
Pacifica's Youth Advisory Board serves everyone in Pacifica, particularly the youth and elderly. We promote healthy, socially connected, and inclusive communities and serve as a voice for the often disregarded youth input in city government, providing valuable insight for our needs. Youth Advisory Board is also an allyson to the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission within the youth and adolescent population, and we provide social opportunities for youth and families via engaging, healthy events.
We have 11 members, seven which could show up today, and yeah, you can see them all right here.
We meet every month on the second and fourth Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. in the community center and council chambers as we are part of the City of Pacifica.
Okay. The Youth Advisory Board is also in charge of the J-Teen Dance, which is basically the dance for all the middle schoolers. We organize it, run it, and chaperone them, and we restarted it after COVID had stopped the dance. We organize it, run it, and chaperone them, and we restarted it after COVID had stopped the dances. And we reach out to the schools such as IBL, Valmar, and Ocean Shore to like, try to organize it and advertise the dance as well. We have sold out every dance because they are super popular, as you guys might have heard. And the way we fundraise for YAB is through the snack shack that we sell there. And yeah, it's just very enjoyed, and it's a good thing.
Aside from the J-teen dances, we also serve a lot of community events, such as the Rockaway Tree Lighting, where we partnered with Half Moon Bay's Cosite Clinic to host a toy drive that we would be donating to the children in the clinic, and we're planning to do again this year.
You may have also seen us at the Pride Parade. So we had a table where we had pronoun pins, where people could come and write their pronouns, and just a fun way to celebrate our pride in Pacifica. So like the toy drive, we just tried to show up for different events. Yeah.
Once again, my name is Alex, and I'm a senior at Sarah. And just as members of the Youth Advisory Board, we help out behind the scenes with a lot of the city's events. And firstly, we help out with the Halloween Haunted House, which takes place every year around Halloween, and it's a favorite of many people and was my personal favorite growing up. In the Haunted House, we volunteered as scarers and led various activities for the people attending the event, whether it's parents or kids. And we also play a part in the annual Rockaway Christmas Tree Lighting, where we helped out with the activity table and other jobs as well, just sort of helping out with the Parks and Rec staff and anything that needs to be done. And so the tree lighting is important to us for spreading joy and happiness in the holiday season and helping with the kids and their excitement, because I know so many kids are very excited for Christmas and parents as well. And additionally, we help with the Parents' Night Out, where we spend quality time with the children, playing games and watching movies while their parents get some time to themselves. And all of this includes helping out the Parks and Rec staff and lending a helping hand in the events and helping things run smoothly. And along with all of these, we have the Senior Bingo Night as well, where we lend a helping hand and sort of let things run well. A few goals we have for this upcoming year. One of our main ones is city council participation, especially for like the youth community in Pacifica. We want to give them a voice and just able to share their thoughts and have an impact on the community. We have a few activities with senior citizens. One of them is a dance in February, which we plan to hold at the community center, and also tech support on Wednesdays. Another activity is the outdoor movie we plan to hold in Frontierland Park, and it's going to be open to the public, so people can just walk over, drive over, and enjoy a movie.
Yeah, also, as I previously said, we brought back the J-teen dances as of last year, and it's been very popular with the middle schoolers. So as of now, we're planning to host four annual J-teen dances. And so far, we've had our first one last month, and it went pretty smoothly, and we're planning on hosting another one in December. And a really cool idea we've been kind of talking about, starting up as of recent, is tutoring the middle schoolers. So the Pacifica School District middle schoolers, helping them out with their homework and partnering with the schools. That would be a really fun activity for us. And one of our goals, just more so for Pacifica in general, is increasing recreation. Since we recently lost Seebol, which was our main form of recreation, we would like to see some activities, some places in Pacifica where teens and people of all ages and citizens can have some fun, and we would also like to host more events for the community. Sorry, the clicker is. Thank you. That's your presentation.
Council members.
Sure, I'll start. Hi, everybody. I'm Mary. It's so good to have you here. We're so happy that the YAB is back. And for me, uplifting young voices is really, really important. And it says Youth Advisory Board, right? And so I really look forward to hearing what issues are important to you. Recording in progress. Okay. Yeah, what issues are important to you, how you think, you know, we can make some changes to make life healthy and safe for all of you. So thank you for all the work that you're doing. I'm so happy that you get to work with the staff members that you're working with, because I know how cool they are, and I look forward to supporting you in any way that I can. And I really like that there's such a mix of schools, because we know that Pacifica kids go to all different schools. So thank you so much.
And I saw on the internet people going crazy trying to find tickets to the dance, because the dance was sold out. Everybody wanted to go. So obviously, you're doing a great job. Thanks for help at the Rockaway Tree Lighting. That's my big event, and it really brings in a lot of people here, too. So just thank you for everything. Appreciate all of you.
I'm Christine. I knew I haven't met any of you yet before, but I'm so delighted to have you here in our room, speaking well, and so engaged in our city and helping make it better. And besides what my other council members have already said, I mean, your work for the seniors is so cool, too, because I think for a lot of them where they're mostly hanging out with older people, to see some joy and youthful aspirations and energy, you know, can really help brighten their day, too. And yes, we definitely want your voices here. You are Pacifica's future. We're just stewarding it for you until you're old enough. So please participate. We'd really love to have your voices.
If I could, please, can you show us the mission statement one more time really quickly? Because I didn't get it all, except for there was one line in there that I went, huh. There. "We promote health, socially connected, and inclusive communities and serve as a voice for the often disregarded youth input in city government." That was the huh part for me. So I think I certainly will echo what my co-council members have already said, that we want to hear your voices. We need your help to figure out where to plug you in and how to do that. It's not easy. It's not easy. I work at Cabrillo School, and I love the idea of the tutoring that you were describing. And I can, I am a witness to the drama around the dance, which just tells you, that's customer feedback. They're loving it. So thank you for being great problem solvers. I was talking with Bob Palacio and understand there's a little couple changes in ideas that you have to help ameliorate that, so thank you. So thanks for doing the work you're doing. It's going to serve you well in your future. Trust me. When you go into college and, or wherever, jobs, you're going to be like, oh, yeah. This is like that committee I did in Pacifica, and give you that expertise to make you even stronger leaders. So thank you very much.
When Bob first introduced all of you, I thought where it was going was that you should take over for us, which as I was anticipating that, I thought, you know, that's probably not the worst idea in the world. So welcome and thank you all for being here. The point wasn't lost on me when you said that the Seebol was like the place where you could actually go, and now you don't have that. I don't know if you've been following any of our like Housing Element meetings lately, but, or Planning Commission meetings for that matter. I know that the city planners have been putting thought into, well, we don't seem to have that. How are the odds more likely we can provide some sort of regional recreational asset that all ages can enjoy and have as a place to go? And so I think that we're looking to you for creative suggestions and solutions between now and whenever a developer might happen to decide to grace us with an amenity that would be conducive toward our younger folk. The Youth Advisory, part of Youth Advisory Board, we want to hear your feedback. I'm excited that on your work plan is city council participation. I'm looking forward to seeing how that manifests. And what I'll tell you is that I think that when younger folk enter this room and have the bravery to step up to that microphone, we on council probably listen to that more acutely than some of the folks who frankly we see on a regular basis and oscillate through various versions of cynicism as a result of that known relationship established. So every time we hear somebody come in with fresh ideas, our ears perk up, and we invite you and your friends to show up as often as humanly possible to tell us exactly what you think. It will be well received. We will listen, and I would be charmed to have that factor into our decision-making. Thank you so much for being here. Would you all like to take a photo with us? Awesome. Okay, as a lay observer, it looks like we have Zoom functioning up to snuff now.
Yes, Zoom is back up.
Wonderful. So with that, that brings us to consent calendar. Do any members of council wish to pull an item from consent? Hearing none. We'll bring it to a public comment on consent. Persons wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so. At this time, each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Those wishing to address the city council on any items listed on the agenda should submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on consent agenda items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not relate to a specific agenda item, then the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay on topic. If the warning is not followed, the mayor will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone. Items on the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion unless a council member requests before a vote on the motion to have an item discussed. Time limit on comments is three minutes or less. I have one card from Marge Davis.
That was an inside joke. Hi, good evening. My name's Marge Davis. Oh, I can't do this with glasses. I like to be able to look at you, and you're blurry. I'm here to make a comment on consent agenda number two, or number six, sorry. I understand that this amendment might be needed, and I'm not here to try and say that you shouldn't approve that, but I wonder if it isn't time to look at the possibility of hiring or contracting for a full or part-time city arborist, someone that is committed to and familiar with the city, the community, and our tree policy and ordinance. This person could also build a relationship of education and trust with our tree service providers working in Pacifica. If you consider what's been spent and what we are essentially paying, the total cost of a part-time arborist has almost been covered. I'm basing that off information, as you know, I'm a member of Tree City Pacifica. There was collected, Menlo Park has an example, has an arborist with a salary of one twenty-six, one hundred and twenty-six thousand. When you factor in one point four for the total cost of employee, it comes to about one hundred and seventy-six, round numbers, one eighty. So for ninety grand, we could maybe have a half-time arborist. We'd have a resource within the city for education, inspection, guidance, and support of the community and the city in preserving our urban forest canopy. Pacific Growth is another example, where they use a contracted arborist, again, part-time, and it costs that city eighty to a hundred thousand annually, and I've heard really good things about him. I was down there this weekend, and their trees and their whole city is really beautiful. Anyway, I would ask that you request a full analysis by staff on which makes the most sense for the community, not just financially, but more importantly, for our tree canopy and ordinance goals in terms of do we have contracted services via on-call, or do we look at hiring a staff arborist? And I would ask that you consider a resolution to add this position and include it in the budget. I would also suggest that if we're serious about our statement regarding our trees on the city website, we talk about that trees are one of Pacifica's most important landscape features. They enrich the community's standard of living with a variety of forms and seasonal colors. They provide oxygen, filter out some pollution from the air. Trees deflect noise and wind, protect soil from erosion, provide habitat for wildlife, and reduce rain. If we're serious about that, then hiring a staff arborist makes even more sense. And if we truly believe that statement from the city website, then I think it also calls into question the cost of our permitting. I think the cost currently is rather exorbitant, and it has a number of negative impacts. It discourages permitting, which makes what is happening with the tree inventory blind to the city. It discourages reporting of unpermitted tree work, because no one wants to inflict the thousand-dollar fee on their neighbors, and encourages solicitation by tree companies for a door-to-door spontaneous decision where no one gets permits, and that's a quote that I have direct. And it also circumvents the two-to-one replacement for heritage trees. If we truly believe the statement in the trees section on the website, a staff arborist makes sense in many ways. Thank you for your consideration, your service, and your time.
Thank you. That was the one card I have. Emily, do we have anybody on the line?
We have one person on the line, but no raised hands.
Okay. If we have no further desire for public comment, we'll bring it back to council for questions to liberation motion. I do have a question to follow up.
We have one raised hand now, if you're amenable to.
Sure, I'll be happy to call on that person before closing it off.
It is for Cliff Lawrence.
Mr. Lawrence, please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining.
This is Cliff Lawrence. I'll mute my TV.
I can hear you. Cliff, can you hear us? Did you happen to press any button on your console that may have turned you off? I can see that our system might be a little glitchy tonight, so. Trying to allow you as much time as I can. Cliff, can you hear us? And Emily, on your end, it looks like he's unmuted and able to talk.
He's unmuted.
Okay. I heard you briefly, but then I didn't. So if you're having a technical difficulty, I urge you to send us an email letting us know your thoughts. I am going to ask a question, and we'll be happy to reopen public comment for you. You might want to log off and log back on to see if that helps, and I'll check in with Emily on the other side of my question of staff. So I'll close public comment for the moment. And city manager, I just wondered to give you an opportunity to respond on consent item number six in regards to full-time city arborist versus a contract arborist. My understanding is we're extending a contract here while you're going to be bringing a proposal November thirteenth for more full-time contract arborist. Any thoughts that may have generated?
That's correct. Item six tonight is to amend the contract with NCE for our current arborist services, but in the meantime, in parallel, we had gone. But in the meantime, in parallel, we had gone through an RFP process, a thorough RFP to seek proposals from consulting arborist firms for continuing this work, and that recommended contract will be coming back to the council on November 13th.
Thank you very much. And I'll certainly take public feedback and have those discussions internally, and I'm happy to follow up offline with Marge Davis to get a better sense. And I still notice on the television, it's popping in and out a little bit. I don't know if that has something to say about the Zoom capability, but do you have Cliff Lawrence there? Or is he... Do you have a hand raised?
Yeah, I can allow him to talk again.
Okay. Cliff, can you hear us? Cliff Lawrence, please unmute if you're able.
He's unmuted.
I have this vision of you hysterically screaming at your screen right now, trying to get us to hear you like in one of those bad dreams. Okay, so I'm going to urge you to go ahead and send your comments to us in written form. And I apologize for any technological problems we are having tonight. So I'm going to bring it back to us for any other questions deliberation or motion.
I move that we improve items one through seven on the consent.
I'll second.
Motion and second, please vote.
And consent calendar as moved by Mayor Protem Vaterlas and seconded by Council Member Beer passes unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to public comments, not public comments on items not on the posted agenda. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the city council shall be recognized by the mayor during this time, provided however that only items not on the agenda for this meeting may be addressed. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If comments do not address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. If the warning is not followed, the mayor will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone. A maximum of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker. I've got a card from Ted Bisson, Chris Redfield, and Marge Davis. If anyone else wishes to speak, please bring up your card. Third time's a charm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and my fellow residents. Good evening. My name is Ted Bisson, and I'm here to talk tonight, try again, to talk about some conflicts of interest that arose during the recent removal of a large protected tree next to my home. There was a very tall tree, and it was in the lot behind mine. It appeared to be in poor health, and it was leaning towards my house. After the storms earlier this year, my wife and I decided that something really should be done about this before it caused a problem. So we talked to the owners, and they agreed to remove it. A different neighbor exercised their right to object. And it was during the commission hearing on this that my neighbor said that it was convenient that the arborist's report stated exactly what we wanted it to say, that the tree was a hazard and recommended that it be removed. Now, I don't think it should come as any particular surprise that if somebody such as myself, completely untrained in the care and maintenance of a tree, sees a tree that looks to be in a bad state, that maybe an expert would agree at that point. It is true that the owners were the ones that found the arborist and paid for the report, but this is an expected practice for all such applications. Still, there's room for improvement. That's why tonight I'd like to recommend that the city provide future applicants with a curated list of licensed arborists. Now, you could use anyone you want, but if it's not somebody on that list, we should just make it very clear that application processing time may be a little bit extended. Now, the idea of a list isn't unprecedented. The city provided a list of plumbers for the sewer lateral replacement program in Lindemar for years. I think they even negotiated the rate with the plumbers, and they certainly had a program to help pay for the work, which is why I also believe that the city should be paying for half of the cost of these arborist reports. If both sides are paying into it, there should be far less reason to believe that the report is slanted one way or the other, other than the truth. The advantage to the city is that the staff and the commissioners who review these applications will have more consistent and comparable reports to work with. Questions about the meaning of statements and findings will be more easily interpreted. The need to send a second arborist to review the matter, as was the case for mine, will be far less required and will not lead to as many extra delays and worries as we experienced. Now, as I'm almost out of time tonight, I'll return at a future meeting to discuss the other major conflict of interest that took place, the conflict of interest and lack of transparency that occurred when members of the city government and their households became involved in the matter that simply eroded the trust, both in the process and the decisions of this council. For now, thank you for your attention. Good night.
Thank you very much. Chris Redfield?
Good evening, staff and council. I wanted to thank and acknowledge the diligent, in-depth, comprehensive work of the planning department, the planning commission, and the council on our recent iteration for submission of the housing element. While extensive work has gone into this on all aspects to reach core arena numbers with generous buffer, it is tragic that all of this effort is to please an agency, HCD, that has no interest in Pacifica or seemingly other small cities. As a former council member and mayor recently stated, these mandates come from on high with no apparent concern for the people or towns they affect. Local control is ever shrinking, with many reckless state bills that force compliance regardless of local wants or limitations. This recent six-cycle expanded Pacifica's arena mandate by five times over the previous cycle. With limited buildable parcels and HPD in place, we will likely see multi-level, high-density buildings in Pacifica. Perhaps it's time to voice public disapproval of on-high state mandates. I thank planning, the planning commission, and council for their great work under difficult conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Marge Davis is my last card.
My name's Marge Davis. I'm a member of Tree City Pacifica, and I am speaking for Tree City Pacifica at the moment. I would like to share with you a letter that we submitted back on October 14th about a situation that's very concerning to us. And this went to Christian Murdock, city manager Kevin Woodhouse, Lisa Peterson, and Bob Palacio. Dear Mr. Murdock, since September, Skyview Tree Service of Santa Clara has illegally removed at least 15 trees from 10 homes on six streets. And here we listed the streets, but I'm choosing to not read them here in public and possibly more. They are soliciting business door-to-door and telling homeowners their trees are dangerous and that no one gets permits. This company pushes for spontaneous decisions, and within a day or two, they are back cutting down the trees, literally within a day or two. 80-foot pines. That was my interjection. This company, excuse me, Pacificans who know about the permit process could be deterred by the $1,000 permit fee for getting quotes from other companies. It is difficult for code enforcement to catch Skyview because they move quickly. Company reps have been warned about abiding by the ordinance but continue to operate illegally, moving from neighborhood to neighborhood. The lack of permits means that there is no chance for neighbors to appeal, and no tree replacements are planted. Our tree canopy has been reduced by at least 14 trees when we could have gained the same amount or even more, given the two-to-one replacement requirement. Although we have gathered more specific data, including addresses, we do not feel homeowners should be fined when they have been manipulated by a company using questionable business tactics. We also believe the $1,000 permit fee is too high, and that a city arborist, once we have one, should perform the required arborist report. Tree City Pacifica requests that the city fine this company to the full extent allowed by the ordinance, charging Skyview the value of the trees they have removed and/or revoking their license. In addition, we ask that the city notify local tree companies operating in Pacifica of the new ordinance and to start enforcing it. If any tree company violates a new ordinance, its license to operate in Pacifica should be revoked, and the company be subject to penalty. Please respond to our request and act quickly before more of the city's canopy is depleted. Sincerely, Tree City Pacifica members Sandy Ayers, Gail Bitten Shoemaker, Marge Davis, Kai Martin, Susan Miller, Jeff Moroso, and Paul Toda. And I would just like to add a quick comment of my own during the recent city council meeting where we did talk about fees. I know it was said, one of the council members, when I asked what the outcome was, said, well, we kicked it down the road for more data. Well, here's a sampling of data, and that data is one month, one company, a radius of about five blocks, and a couple other areas of town. And we have also witnessed, we've been reported and also witnessed them doing jobs since this letter was sent. We should all be really concerned that this is going on in Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, do we have folks with raised hands?
We have one raised hand. It is for Cliff Lawrence.
Cliff Lawrence, I will be delighted if I can hear your voice. Please state your name for the record. I'll let you know when you have a minute remaining of your three. Go ahead and unmute.
He is unmuted.
We still have the call-in option available. Is that not correct? So Cliff, you might try calling the phone number or logging in on a different device. Again, I urge you to send your comments in writing if the call-in option is not available. I'll give it a minute. And you would call in at 1-669-900-6833, webinar ID 811-5615-8241 pound. Press *9 to raise your hand. And then when we see your hands raised, we'll call on you. It'll be *6 to unmute. And I know there are time delays, so I'll give it a moment in hopes that he'll call So we're not seeing that hand, and again, I apologize, especially if the technological issue happens to be on our end. Try the call-in option on the next round perhaps, and we look forward to reading your comments. And with that, we'll close public comment, seeing no one else who wishes to comment, and bring it back to council for council communications. I'd certainly favor a update on the Skyview Tree Service from staff at the appropriate time, whether or not that's now or during staff communications. I know that an email has been sent to Tree City in regards, and perhaps stating some of that information for the public would be helpful. Otherwise, council members, do you have comments? I'll entertain lights. Council Member Beer.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and go because mine's not very long. Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight. I appreciate it all the time. I attended the Economic Development Committee, which was really a wonderful meeting. We had a presentation from Pacifica Local Signs, signage ed was there and talked about the signs at the Fog Fest, which was a really big hit actually, that he put up signs to so we could recognize our local vendors, and it really worked. Folks would actually visit their booths. It worked out really well. And then Cindy Abbott was there to talk about our age-friendly business project. I had a meeting about Pacifica Pride, and then I got COVID. Wah, wah, wah. So I attended the committee and commission interviews over Zoom, as well as the study session, which I do not recommend doing over Zoom. It was not fun. That's all.
Thank you for that.
Okay. I watched the study session, but I couldn't participate on Zoom even. So I did attend the CK, the City and County Association of Governments meeting by Zoom. And I just am happy to say that they are putting forward $5 million towards our manor overcrossing project, provided we can get some extra money to finish the project. But that's a really good start, and it's really nice to see something from City and County Association of Governments because they've been working on managed lanes for so long that we finally came forward and got something. And I also attended something in person. I attended a barbecue which were for local, county, and state staffers, and it was really nice to talk to those different young people, and some of them who we knew very well, and just communicate on an easy basis. And so that was a nice, funny event, and that's it.
I can go. I had a very busy two weeks, and I'm really hoping the next two weeks is not this busy because it's really exhausting. I attended an unhoused-on-the-coast meeting with the PRC, and just want to say that the PRC is looking for space for their food pantry, for refrigerator and food. They just don't have enough space where they are. And if they can find that, that would let them have more volunteers working too. So if anybody has any leads on space to rent. Attended the Pacific Beach Coalition meeting. I went to a county climate summit for a day and got to share that with a couple of people on the Climate Action Task Force, which was fun. Actually, one of the first speakers I want to talk about is Greg Castro from the Association of Ramatush Aloni, and he just set a wonderful tone for the meeting in just thinking about how we think about land and climate and the way the Native American would always, Native American communities would always move as they needed to, right? And there was no concept of land ownership. There was no concept of homelessness because they all took care of each other. So it was a really interesting kind of thought process to think about how this land was settled before, as we got into this work. Anyway, attended a couple of good sessions on community-led planning and funding for climate resilience too. I met with Roy Ernst, who's getting me up to date on our age-friendly community and which is an incredible honor to be, that we do so much really for seniors here in Pacifica. But there is an action plan that's required for, you know, steps to keep that designation. So I know that's something he's going to be working on and hopefully with us, council too. I've had three meetings with neighbors and businesses on Esplanade, trying to understand some of the issues, trash, speeding cars, bypassing the manor intersection, safety issues, unhoused issues, and gathering information so I can help try to see how we can maybe solve these together as a community and, you know, in partnership with the city and the county. I met with Mike Caligie, who's the county executive, is like our city manager but for the whole county, and talking about our unhoused and shelters and affordable housing in Pacifica. And we'll have a follow-up meeting this week, a longer meeting with his housing staff to talk about those things in more detail and some possible ideas for some projects. The committee interviews, I had my home tours. We had 31 people come by over the course of the day and actually saw one of them at the Pacifica Dems event, and he was already getting funding and putting in his heat pumps after our conversation. So that was really exciting. The Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission met, and I just want to announce that I'm excited to hear that CERT training is starting up again, and that's Community Emergency Response Team. So that's a six-week series of classes once a week, starting January 18th. There's 24 spots, and you can email Breck Hitz, H-I-T-Z-B, at PacificaPolice.org if you're interested in that. It's a really terrific program, knowing if there is a big disaster, that our police and fire can't be everywhere, and we'll need community members spread throughout the city, you know, to help their neighbors. And then I went to Housing Leadership Day last Friday, learning about some things coming up on the ballot measures at the state and regional level to... regional level to try to raise funds and reduce the voting thresholds from 2/3 to 55% to try to pass bonds for affordable housing and infrastructure.
Like libraries?
Sorry?
Like libraries?
I don't know about libraries. That's a good question, though.
Are we talking about ACA-1?
ACA-1, right.
Libraries would be included on that list.
Oh, all right. Yeah, it's really hard to meet that 67% threshold. And so, anyway, I think cities, that would be a real help to a lot of cities trying to do some of this work. And then, actually, I heard that Rosanna Shia, the author of California Against the Sea, was speaking at Stanford that same day, and so I snuck out and went to hear her speak. She was in a conversation with Charles Lester, who was one of the scientists for the Coastal Commission for a long time. It's a really good book. I've only, I'm only on chapter four, but she has gone into different communities all over the state, really trying to understand their issues and their planning around sea level rise. And there's a whole chapter on Pacifica. But what she really stressed was the need for community visioning on what we really wanted our coast to be, and bringing in as many voices as we could to that conversation. Anyway, I highly recommend her book. She's an amazing woman. And then I was at the Pacifica Dems with Planning Director Murdock, presenting with a representative from HCD and a couple of my fellow council members, too. And it was good to hear from them, I think, a bit about the mandates and how some of these numbers got passed down that were actually, the Bay Area and A-BAG is what decided the different cities in the Bay Area. That wasn't HCD directly. And kind of a reminder of how important it is for us to be representing, you know, on those committees to have a voice, too. But a lot of cities are struggling. Only 44% of Bay Area cities are compliant so far in our area here. And thanks to Mike O'Neill for hosting this barbecue that Sue mentioned. And one interesting tidbit, if you remember Katrina Rel, who worked for Jackie Speer, she's now switching to work for Anna Eschew. So that was fun to see her. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Thank you. So I thought I hadn't had such a busy couple of weeks until I wrote down everything that I did, and I went, no wonder. I'm tired. But not as much as you.
This is not a competition.
Yeah, I know, because I'm not in that game. So there was, well, one thing I just want to acknowledge for all of us is this is our third meeting in a row because of our special study sessions with the Planning Commission. And so not just for us, our staff have all been here. And it's a big lift. It's a lot of work, and we're doing it.
Are you including the interviews?
I'm not there yet. I hadn't gotten there yet. So, working backward, there were three things I was supposed to do one day, including something to do with breast cancer in San Pedro Park. Literally three things I was supposed to do that day that I did none of, including that one, because I was done. And I'm glad, in light of my colleagues who, at my school site, my day job, and through my night job and every other part of my life job, who have had COVID recently. And I just want to say, test, 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 mask, 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 and it's out there, you know? And as we all move indoors, because it's cold and getting colder, we're going to see more and more. So I'm personally a twice-a-week tester. I don't know about all of you, but you can get tests at the public library, by the way.
The Postal Service, by the way, recently did another round of the four free COVID tests.
They did, and I got mine already. And I must say, I appreciate that they're not full of plastic, except for the swab, the stick of the swab, which you'd think it could be cardboard, but no. But everything else was pretty cardboard, and I was kind of happy about that. Anyway, I did make it to the Pacificans Care fundraiser at the Firehouse, which was a joy and so well put together and just a lot of fun. I had a great opportunity to attend the groundbreaking at the Sheila Water Tank. And I had to work a little bit of a work schedule to make sure I could go to that, because, for one thing, I can see that tank. And I've been, you know, watching the developments on the hill way across from where my house is. So that was exciting with North Coast County Water District. Thank you, Jack Brigette, who's here with us tonight, for inviting us. And the mayor and I were there. We had a lot of fun. It was great. We, as I said, had a joint session with the Planning Commission to wrap up our review of the housing element at this stage. I think we're making good progress there. I attended the Resource Management and Climate Protection Meeting in San Mateo. And, you know, under the Brown Act, this is one of those ones that you have to go to in person. And it's at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So yipes, right? I'm like, oh, but I made it. And thankfully, because we almost didn't have quorum. And, you know, I would have hated to have not made it to that and been the reason we didn't have a quorum. So at that meeting, I have, I always have the great opportunity, I think it lands almost always with North Coast County Water District Board Meeting Night. And so at that meeting, I always hear from Tom Francis from Basca, Bay Area Water, something. And they, he gives a fantastic update on the reservoirs, the state of the water, where we are in the state. And it's a statewide presentation. And so it's really fun for me when I go and hear his presentation and see his slides. And then that night, I see an abbreviated version of the same report, because then I get, you know, the really important details from Executive Director of North Coast County Water, Adrian. One thing is, we had a very successful water year in 2023. I know that when you're in the middle of 13, I think it was, Atmospheric Rivers, it doesn't feel like a success, per se, but the reservoirs are nearly full. And it's one of the best years on record. So we will have to keep an eye on making sure the reservoirs aren't overfill and creating problems with flooding in communities through this next water year. But it's predicted that there will not be a water reduction request, voluntary water use reduction request, as opposed to the, you know, more heavy-handed mandated reductions. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't use water wisely, and we should. They were very excited to talk about a really interesting idea about water collection in foggy areas, which Councilmember Bowles mentioned, she's working on a project around that. And North Coast County has been engaged in that for the last year with the Samantha Hauser project. So that's exciting.
I hear Ray is jumping into it, too, these days.
Good. The more the merrier, right? Yeah, good. Because we have fog. Got fog? We have T-shirts for that, Christine, you can pass on to your partner. So there was a lot of talk, and I'm always big ears whenever it comes up. There's Basca, and then there's BACWA, Bay Area Clean Water Agency Workshop on Advancing Water Reuse. And what they're talking about is potable water. And really, what they're talking about is the idea of potable water coming from wastewater treatment systems. Now, in our case, we're using that water for watering things, like some of the holes at the golf course and some of the planters on Palmetto Avenue. People talk about purple pipe. That's the way in which it's conveyed. And so whenever this topic comes up, I'm listening intently for information about grant programs. And so with our California Consulting, if there's anything like that, I have a feeling that we could use more and more, that the big challenge is conveying the water, right? And so that's expensive to lay the pipe and all of that. But hopefully there will be some opportunities, some more funding. They talk about a Sharon Heights Golf Course project with West Bay Valley Sanitation District, and how they use the water to water the golf course. And it was so great and so innovative. And I'm like, like we do in Pacifica? I mean, I know we're not doing the whole course. It would be wonderful if we could convince our partners in San Francisco to extend that. We heard about the potential or very likely housing measure in 2024. That's an omnibus, or whatever you call it, mega bond nine county bay area. And on the heels of that, I believe, coming in '26 is a transportation bond. So stay tuned for those. More information on that. I had a coastal cities group meeting on the 19th, and we largely reviewed legislation that's just been signed into law. We focused on Senate Bill 272, Senator Laird's bill that has to do with local coastal plans being required as part of the local coastal program update process. I'm like, good thing, because we're doing ours. But there are going to be new guidelines, and it's, they're going to be coming out in 2024. So it's very soon, within a year's time. And so we're, as I wrote in my notes, we should ask for a robust engagement process, perhaps regional meetings, so that all the coastal communities can have a really good understanding of what the requirements of this legislation will be. But it is the first time that legislation has included both Coastal Commission and BCDC, which is the Bay Conservation and Development, something, district, I think. There's also a land use streamlined approval process, Senate Bill 423, which was approved and signed into law by the governor. So the implications of that, again, for coast, for this is for housing, what is it going to mean for building housing in the coastal zone? And how is that going to be articulated with the Coastal Commission and those issues? So we're waiting to hear more, but those are the things we focused on. And of course, it was fun to go and have a little downtime with former council member O'Neill. I think that's it. Busy, but fun. I know.
That was a lot.
I know.
Yeah.
See how much?
You and Christine did all the things that I couldn't do.
Okay.
I did not have the opportunity to go to Mike's party, unfortunately. So, first of all, thank you, Jack Brigette, President of NCCWD, the Water District Board, for being here. It's good to see you in good health. I'm sorry I haven't had the opportunity to come over and say hello to you yet. As always, you know, world stuff weighs heavy on my mind, between Ukraine and now Israel. And I feel it seeping into a heavy weight in some of our constituents' minds. And so I'll just say that the urge for there to be peace in this world is strong, and the particulars can bog us down rather quickly. And I think the thing not to lose sight of, as particulars notwithstanding, the desire to see peace is strong, and let's focus on that however we go about it. I attended the Firehouse Open House, Firehouse 72. I had the opportunity to bring my girlfriend and her 10-year-old daughter to go and see how some of the Firehouse stuff works, like the Jaws of Life and the repelling off of the house. And it was largely a lot of fun. Later in the afternoon, I had invited Mayor Adam Rack from San Carlos to come and teach me a little bit about bird watching in San Pedro Valley Park. So I got to deepen that relationship a little bit. What's not to like?
Right.
I attended the groundbreaking of the Sheila Tank with the Water District and Councilmember Beckmeyer. It was really good to see that project coming to fruition. Later that day was the council meeting, so I went from there to the council meeting you referred to earlier. The next day, the next day, after my evening's events, I hightailed it up to, down to Monterey, because the Calafco Conference began on Wednesday, bright and early, 7 o'clock in the morning. We were, some of us were bussed to the Monterey Regional Airport for a tour of their airport down there, amongst just thinking it was cool to be bussed around the airport tarmac, even though it's a little smaller than San Francisco's. We got to see the fire trucks, which kind of have these domed noses, unlike normal fire trucks, because there's all sorts of considerations when you're trying to put out an airplane fire. Anyway, what proceeded were three days of Calafco, which is kind of like Cal Cities, but for LAFCO, to which I hear probably at least half of my colleagues, if not members of the audience, going, okay, what the hell is LAFCO?
It's spelled out. You still say, what the hell is LAFCO?
Local Agency Formation Commission, to which you say, what is that? And over the course of three days, they remind you over and over again, we are the obscure but powerful commission, which tells you absolutely nothing. And so if you're to look up a definition, LAFCO's, Local Agency Formation Commissions, are state-mandated quasi-judicial countywide commissions whose purview is to oversee boundary changes of cities and special districts, the formation of new agencies, including the incorporation of new cities and districts, and the consolidation or reorganization of special districts and/or cities. Suffice to say, this was three days of really wonky material. One of the most succinct and helpful phrases I heard were, "We stand up for rational growth." Take that how you will. There was a bit about disaster recovery and the way LAFCO interacts with that. There was the annual business meeting, a coastal region roundtable, which was basically just talking about how we run our meetings. There was a thing about LAFCO dynamics, and one about guiding adrift agencies back on course. I would like that to be helpful in the case of the Broadmore Police Protection District. Sadly, I think they may have run too far adrift, but we'll see how that goes. On the third day, municipal services in the 21st century and building on the basics of special districts. If any of you have fallen asleep by now, you can be forgiven, though I assure you, it was slightly more interesting in real time. On that third day, when we were talking about municipal service reviews, which is a big thing that LAFCOs do, we basically look at the different jurisdictions and special districts, like the Water District, for example, on a five-year rotating basis, just to see basically how each of these agencies are doing. And we're required to do this approximately every five years, just go through the lineup and see how they're doing. What was brought up were RENA. And so if you think Cal Cities, you're thinking, okay, there's a representative from each of the several hundred cities in that room. And often, we travel as a full council, depending on circumstance, and staff. It was like that, only instead of all the cities, it was just all the counties. So it was a smaller group. And what was interesting was hearing in that more saturated space, how it seemed like when the topic got on to RENA, regional housing needs, allocation numbers, and us trying to update our housing elements, you were hearing the same tune sung from every single county in the state. I found that interesting. It was a little bit off-topic by that point in the conference, but it was interesting to hear that reverberating through the room from every single corner. And presumably translating that into every single corner of the state is having a similar issue. And it's easy to see that microcosm on our level and how we're trying to grapple with it, and whether or not our timing was off for reason A, B, C. And then when you hear that everybody in the state is dealing with more or less the same issues, that's illuminating. And so from there, I left. And so from there, I left to meet with Lisa Gochet in East Palo Alto. She had promised me a tour of what's called EpiCenter, EPA East Palo Alto Center. It's this really cool community creative arts space where they can basically give you every level of teaching, from like elementary to college-level instruction. It was a rather brief tour, so I didn't get as robust a sense of exactly how it's structured as I would have liked. But to say that I saw enough of it to see how cool it is. And next to that will be built the library, and not too amount of time, East Palo Alto is getting a new library, and I think that makes us next on the list thereafter. So after that, the next day was the City, the Pacifica Democrats Club, with the Housing and Community Development Representative, Jose Ayala, giving most of the talk. And then our Planning Director, Christian Murdock, was also there to supplement. And one of the response I got to a question was that the state does not look at the housing allocations in terms of feasibility. And it's fine, to my sensibility, that ABAG ultimately is given the reins to go and figure out what equation is appropriate for distributing the numbers to the various jurisdictions. In the case of ABAG, I think it's 101 jurisdictions. But what, for me, is helpful to understand is that when you go to a higher level than ABAG and the numbers that the state has given to ABAG, what the state, apparently, if my question was understood, and the answer to my question was understood, what the state is not looking at is the feasibility of building housing on any particular level, in any particular area, which, again, I found to be illuminating. And so I will be having a conversation with Mark Berman for the mayor's office soon. I think I'll have that conversation with him offline, along with Josh Becker at nearest opportunity. But it seems to me that feasibility might be a missing component to a statewide process, where at least largely, a lot of us want to do a better job in figuring out how to house everybody, let alone those amongst us who aren't making six digits a year. And then this afternoon, I got to enjoy a tour of the old wastewater treatment plant, in which we are basically sitting with Councilmember Bowles, and having never walked around this building that I otherwise get to sit in at least every other week of my life. It was really cool to check out the pump station, and also the kind of abandoned office space that was really eerie, but kind of cool. So that's... That's my report for the week. And with that...
Did you find my mandala down there?
No, but you'll be happy to know, we did not find your mandala down there. And frankly, if we had found your mandala down there, it would have raised way more questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to city staff.
Thank you, Mayor Big Stick. Councilmembers?
Oh, I'm sorry. Before I move on to city staff, I did want to mention that we will be adjourning tonight in honor of Hal Ash, owner of Alamar Station, who recently passed. I'll give council members the opportunity before adjournment to make report of any recollections they'd like, but I wanted to let the community know that is how we will be adjourning tonight. Go ahead, staff.
Great, thank you. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. Just a couple communications. One, I'll start with the Skyview Tree Service. I don't have specific enforcement details for the council, but I did want to say, and thanks to Tree City Pacifica and others in the community for bringing immediately upon learning about their illegal tree activities, the city did move into enforcement mode with them through code enforcement and the police department, and we're continuing that effort. On a related note, we did complete a tree informational brochure about the city's tree preservation ordinance, and are spreading that widely. Tree City Pacifica also will help us in the distribution of that. We also are sending it with a letter to all of the tree service companies with business licenses in Pacifica to put that information out there widely. I wanted to hold up this sample of a poster I've talked about recently, the Pacifica Stands United in Love companion poster to the Pacifica Stands United Against Hate poster, just to say that these are now available at City Hall for anyone in the community who wants to pick up some to distribute or display at their residence or business themselves. And there are copies on the back table here at the council meeting.
Well, I think it's very important and powerful to stand against hate. I think it's even more powerful to stand for something, and would love to see that poster right here, that we're standing for love, or otherwise, we're standing against hate.
Yeah, we should put it right there as well. We did stick one over there on the side of the podium, but, and exactly the point made by the mayor, is why the standing for something mantra is being utilized. And finally, I wanted to just announce that the next city council meeting, which is November 13th, I believe, Monday, November 13th, at that meeting, there'll be a special study session about the local coastal land use plan, and providing information about the Coastal Commission staff's 125 comments that were provided on the city's plan. That completes my communications.
I don't know if you have a sense this early on, will we be getting information like we normally do through staff reports and the agenda? Or will the information provide a little ahead, or?
I will definitely by the normal deadline. I don't have information about if we'll be prepared to release it in advance.
Oh, okay, fine, thank you.
I mean, in advance of the normal five days.
I know that that will precipitate a three-meeting effort. And so I look forward to that beginning the process of bringing all that information through the community and ultimately through us. Thank you. So that brings us to consideration, there's no public hearings tonight. An introduction of an ordinance amending Section 4-16.03(c)(1)(2), windows and window coverings of Chapter 16 of Title IV Cannabis Public Safety Licenses of the Pacifica Municipal Code relating to storefront window size, requirements for cannabis operations, recommended California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA status, exempt pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Section 15061(b)(3), proposed action introduced by title only and way of further reading of an ordinance entitled An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica, amending Section 4-16.03(c)(1)(2), windows and window coverings of Chapter 16 of Title IV Cannabis Public Safety Licenses of the Pacifica Municipal Code, and finding adoption of the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. I am Planning Director, Christian Murdock. I'll be joined momentarily by Police Captain Chris Clements. As you kindly introduced by that long introduction, we're here tonight to talk about a potential amendment to the City of Pacifica's Cannabis Public Safety License Regulations. Tonight's discussion really relates to the differences between the current or original storefront standards enacted in 2017 by the city council, and potential new storefront standards changes in 2023. This relates to the requirement for the exterior facade of cannabis operations. And the municipal code currently has standards related to the composition of those storefronts. In essence, it requires that they be primarily glass, at least 45% of the entire storefront, in terms of surface area, being glass, and then at least 60% of the horizontal length of the store being comprised of glass. And the intent is to provide sufficient visibility for public safety purposes for exterior observers, notably the police department, in the event of any public safety incident at a cannabis operation. The proposed standards changes would reduce the surface area requirement to 35% of the storefront, require at least 50%, down from 60% of the horizontal length of the store, to be glass. It would establish a minimum vertical and horizontal dimension of two feet for the glass. And then clarify that exterior front facade at the first-floor level, it's silent on that point currently. And we do have some cannabis operations that are in buildings with more than one story. And so this would clarify that that calculation or those calculations are only for the first-floor level. And then lastly, the amendment would only be applicable between January 1st and June 30th of 2024. The new ordinance, if introduced and ultimately adopted by the city council, would allow new or amended cannabis activity permits, or caps, to use the reduced storefront standards. In reality, we expect likely one cannabis operation is likely to seek reliance on these reduced standards, seaweed holistics. More detail is in the staff report. Try not to get my presentation bogged down in all of the background. But essentially, this ordinance is flowing out of a cannabis activity permit revocation process for seaweed holistics in November of 2022, where the city council indicated that their cannabis activity permit would be revoked unless these ordinance amendments were enacted. And so after the six-month period of applicability of these modified storefront standards, they would revert back to the original ordinance standards of the higher surface area and horizontal length requirements, except that the following would remain in effect, which are the minimum vertical and horizontal dimensions of two feet. That way, we don't get a bunch of small, you know, non-functional types of window or door areas counting towards the compliance standard. And then that clarification about the exterior of the front facade at the first-floor level would also remain. Staff wants to point out that there are important public safety considerations related to the initial recommendation by staff of these storefront standards, as well as the city council's initial enactment and adoption of them. In particular, as the cannabis regulations and the prominence of cannabis businesses has proliferated across the state in reliance to, in reliance on revisions in state law several years ago, public safety agencies have seen that cannabis operations have been targeted by criminal groups, notably robberies and burglaries. In part, this is believed to be because many cannabis businesses have a high proportion of their sales in cash transactions, and there's a high resale value of cannabis in the illicit market. So it makes them targets for robberies and burglaries. There have been incidents across the Bay Area, including several incidents in Pacifica, with two attempted burglaries and one successful burglary in less than two years. And just within the past 10 months of 2023, there have been serious incidents in the City of Berkeley, Livermore Area, San Francisco, Santa Cruz, and elsewhere. And these suspects are often heavily armed, pistols, assault weapons, et cetera, very serious criminal enterprises. And lastly, the increased storefront visibility aids police response. It helps the police have a clear view of suspects, employees, and customers in the event of an in-progress response. And it's not, video surveillance is not a substitute for the line of sight provided by these storefront windows. So in simple terms, from the police department perspective, which Captain Clements can elaborate on, more visibility is better than less visibility. And so it was with that in mind that the initial storefront window standards were proposed by staff and enacted by city council. If this ordinance was to be enacted by city council, staff's analysis is that it would be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under the general rule exemption in SEQA Guidelines, Section 15,064(b)(3), which says in pertinent part, where it can be seen with certainty there's no possibility of a significant effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to SEQA. These storefront standards, in our analysis, would be qualifying under that exemption. So the recommendation tonight is to have the city council consider the proposed amendment, determine whether it is appropriate, and if it is deemed appropriate, to introduce the ordinance. This would be the first reading, and it would come back to city council for a final action on adoption at a subsequent meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, council. Do you have questions? Councilmember Bowles. And thank you.
I have a few questions. So one for Captain Clements. Can you tell us about crime at dispensaries, specifically to Pacifica? Like, I know there was one recently at Bloom Room. Has there been anything here, or safety calls, or anything else? I don't know how long they've been in operation, but during the time.
Of course, Councilmember, Captain Chris Clements with your Pacifica Police Department. Good evening. So without going into detail into any opening, ongoing investigations, we have had burglaries and things of that nature at some of our cannabis businesses, yes. So the ability for our officers to safely respond to these locations, which have been targeted by criminals throughout the Bay Area and throughout the state, is critical. It's important to the safety of the community and to our officers as well that are responding to these type of incidents.
And has there been anything specific at seaweed holistics at their site since they've been in operation?
Not a burglary that, not recently, that I'm aware of.
Okay. And Christian, can you, so I understand this is a six-month exemption that's really mostly for this particular operation. But assuming that we allow this and it's permitted, is this permanent for them? Or, I mean, are there some ways that they might lose this approval? You know, if they don't renew their business license, or, you know, anything else? Or as part of the annual review?
Right, so trying to strike the right balance between the ordinance and not too much specifically on seaweed and its permit, because the hearing tonight was not noticed for that purpose. This is one of two essential parts related to the revocation proceeding. The first is the city council to determine whether this ordinance can be amended. If it is amended, the second part is for the Planning Commission to amend the cannabis activity permit, to find it in compliance with the modified storefront regulations. Currently, there's a condition of approval that requires modifications to the storefront to increase the area of the windows. Seaweed has not complied with that requirement, and it was one of the points on which they were found to be out of compliance related to the revocation. So it's a two-step process. Once that Planning Commission action to amend the permit is finalized, they will be in compliance and not out of compliance, even upon the reversion of the standard.
Okay. And then, when this came up last November, one of the owners let me come in, because I wanted to check the dimensions of the window. And I went back out there this afternoon to confirm something I had. And I'm a little concerned if you, I mean, we're approving this ordinance in essence for their spot. And I don't know if you have a picture of their storefront, but it's divided up, you know, into five windows there. So each of those windows is actually less than two feet. So I'm not sure, because you have a new minimum two-foot dimension, how that works.
Sure, I think if you're concerned about that, I certainly would not interpret it against this. It's sort of a continuous area of glass. These mullions or other sort of minor window elements, I would not consider those to be separate windows. But we can think of some clarification if that would help. Or a minimum separation requirement, or maximum separation requirement, something along those lines.
Yeah, probably a maximum, so that, because at some point, they start to be wide and block your view, right?
Right.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be helpful. Oh, and then, and then who enforces it? So I read also, you know, there are signs, and actually, you can see some flyers on some of the glass here. So whose job is it to enforce it, to make sure the glass stays clear? And I also want to point out, so I drove by the Fion Palmetto on my way here, and one of them has Halloween decorations. And so there's spider webs all in their windows, so you can't see in right now.
So there are multiple ways. Certainly, city staff can observe it and take action proactively. That's likely not to be the case, given how thin our staff is typically spread. There's also, for many cannabis operations, an annual review requirement still ongoing. So that would be an opportunity for us to evaluate this. Any member of the public could make a complaint, which we would investigate. And then the police department periodically, in management of the cannabis program, conducts compliance operations. Oftentimes, they'll invite planning staff or otherwise make observations. They may note, hey, it looks like there's a lot of signs, you know, near the windows. Can you follow up? So there are multiple avenues. This is one that we have not specifically followed up on recently in terms of investigation or compliance confirmation. But there would be another opportunity after tonight to investigate that, if needed.
Councilmember Beer?
My question was answered, thank you.
There have been six permits issued at this time, correct?
Correct, six cannabis retail operation permits. We allow two other types in Pacifica, and we have not issued any permits for those. and we have not issued any permits for those.
I'm sorry, say that again?
So all of the operating cannabis operations are retail operations. The city allows testing operations and manufacturing operations. We do not have any active permits for either of those other two types.
Are the, I take it one of those is seaweed. Are the other five operations, retail operations, up and running?
One of them is not. So there are five operating retail operations inclusive of seaweed holistics.
I don't know if it pertains to tonight's discussion. If it makes sense, why is that one not up and running?
They have encountered a number of difficulties in their building process in terms of ownership challenges and so forth.
Fine, inclusive of that one that's been having challenges, are there any of the other five that have had difficulty with the 60-45 covering?
I will say that all of them were reviewed and met or exceeded the storefront window requirements during the review process. There's one business in particular that has shared with me that they have spent, they had to spend significant sums of money to achieve compliance, but they did. And other operations, you know, may have had to undertake modifications as well. I don't know all of the other particulars at this point in time.
But including that one retail operation that's not up and running yet, that one even has met the 60-45 standard?
Correct.
That's my question. Any other questions?
I have one.
Please.
I'm turning on my light.
I don't know.
Does the, I know it's in the report, but I can't find it right now. Does the glass frontage of the business include the door?
Yes.
I was gonna ask this question of the chief, but you're not the chief. You were the chief, so. How comfortable in general does the department feel with the updated standards? It strikes me that they, as written, are temporary. How comfortable from a safety point of view are you with changing to the 50% 35 coverage?
Well, in general, more is better. It's about visibility. It's about, more is better in general when it comes to our ability to look inside these businesses, corresponding to calls for service, whether it be an alarm call or a crime in progress. In this case, it's a temporary adjustment to the requirements, for lack of a better term. But in general, we prefer more. More is better.
More is better in relation to the one business that apparently will be affected by this. How would you rate your safety concerns in this case?
We would, we prefer to see that the standard is consistent across all those businesses. The fact that this is a temporary remedy and that it gives them time to comply, we would be, we'd be comfortable with that.
Wait, say that again. A temporary remedy and then they, so my understanding is that what's going to happen is we're going to sign off on seaweed having that coverage of 50% horizontal 35 overall, and they will be allowed that coverage in perpetuity as a result of allowing this permit, and that will be the end of that story.
I think to maybe respond to the question a different way, really, this is a balancing factor for the city council. The city staff, including the police chief at the time, put forth the recommendation that the city staff thought was in the best public safety interest of the community. This is because of city council's desire to revisit the ordinance, that this is being considered, not at the staff's request or recommendation. And so this is in relation to the revocation process that has led to this item to be considered tonight. And we've put forth this option to resolve the question that the city council raised about revisiting the ordinance.
Understood. I was merely confused for a brief moment by the answer to the question. I just want to make very clear what's, what we are doing tonight. And I want to make clear also what the district's recommendation, or at least feeling on what we're doing tonight is in terms of public safety. So just within the context of, apparently, it will affect this business in this way, and that will be the end of that story. Again, I'm just gauging the feeling of the department in terms of public safety in this instance.
In this instance, we would be fine.
Fair enough. Mayor Potem.
Gone over this and over it and over it. But can you see in that window, day or night? Maybe night because there's lights on inside, but in the day, you clearly cannot see in that window regardless. And have they done engineering reports to show that they cannot enlarge that window? Weren't those presented the last time?
Mayor Potem, I'll respond to the second part of your question first. What I recall in terms of the information that was submitted was not that it would be technically infeasible to comply with the requirement, but that it would be expensive and perhaps exceed the means or the amount of money that the operator would be willing to expend to achieve compliance. These types of modifications are almost never infeasible. They just can cost significant sums of money. And so that's my recollection of the prior information.
Can you clarify? So with this ordinance, we're changing it for only a little bit of time. So does that mean that, so we change it for six months, and then any new businesses will have to comply? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
So this ordinance would take effect for a six-month period. Seaweed Holistics, any other currently permitted business, or any new cannabis business that could open, could take advantage of it in that six-month period. After that, any new or amended permit would need to comply with the reverted, more restrictive standards, the ones that require bigger windows.
Okay. I think that's what I was, I think that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Because I think we all had a little, like, question about that, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I thought it'd be important that I just add, I did have a conversation with the chief about this proposed amendment. And as, you know, Deputy Chief Clements said, they are fine with this proposal. And because of their initial concern with the public safety aspect, that's why my office and, you know, Mr. Murdoch's office worked together to try to limit the exposure. So yes, they were concerned, but they understand council's direction. And we created this limitation to limit the application of this new provision in the future.
Thank you for that clarification. If there's no further questions, I'll be happy to open up to public comment. I don't see any cards in front of me, though if anyone would like to speak, now will be the time for you to do so. Kim Finale, and be so kind as to fill out a card after the fact, please, and state your name for the record.
Kimberly Finale. Hello, councilmembers and staff.
Yeah.
Sorry.
A little louder, closer to the mic.
Oh, sorry. Let's see. I will fill out my yellow card when I sit down. And listening to your deliberations here this evening, one thing stood out in my mind is that if you did not approve the ordinance for the business in question, we would most certainly be losing out on the enormous amount of sales tax that they undoubtedly are passing through to the city. So not only that, you know, but I would kind of think of this as a medical situation. People go to cannabis dispensaries for medicine, and what about their privacy? Just something that crossed my mind, and I think that it deserves consideration also. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone else wishing to speak? Emily, do we have anyone through the Zoom? Last call. I will. Tony, did you want to speak? Okay. So then we're gonna close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation. Councilmember Beer?
Yeah, I feel like I don't have a lot of deliberation, except for that we brought it back for a reason. And I think I'm pretty clear about what that reason is. And so I want to thank staff for, again, once again, coming up with a solution to something that we asked for. So I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. I'm ready to make a motion if no one else wants to.
I have comments before motions made. Anyone else wish to say anything?
Mayor, there was a suggestion earlier about adding clarifying language about mullions to ensure that they are excluded from considering a window area as separate. So I can provide a language for the council to consider in the introduced ordinance.
A modification?
Correct.
You have language to add to the ordinance or to clarify that point?
Correct. Let me find a packet page for you. Packet page 144. So the language that...
I'm a little concerned with adding and amending language. This is a very complex system. And I'm concerned with just adding language at the last minute, that, you know, it's a very complicated regulation, the regulations that were, so Mr. Murdoch can offer his suggestion. I have not reviewed it. So I would prefer, if we get a majority of the council members that want that language, then the planning director and I can work on that language. But, you know, I wouldn't, I would need to review that language in order to be comfortable with it. And we have not had a chance to discuss it. I just wanted the council to be aware of that. It's a very complex ordinance, and one revision could implicate other provisions that we're not even considering. So that, that's part of the process that we go through when we're amending ordinances. And my staff went through it, Mr. Murdoch and his staff went through it to make sure that we picked all that out. So I'm a little concerned with making a change like that. So without making any... But we can do that if there's a majority of the council that would prefer that. Without making any changes, it qualifies for the ordinance how it's written?
Right. I don't think I would interpret that that window at the seaweed...
That would change, okay.
Well, I just want to read it, because I'm not sure. It says, "No glass area used to comply with the provisions of the subsection. Subsection shall have a vertical or horizontal dimension less than two feet." So, I mean, the glass does have a dimension less than two feet. It's broken up by a million.
Yeah.
So what's that issue? Is the panels each individually? Because there's lines in this big glass. And what I'm hearing is the planning director saying that's de minimis, for lack of a better word. How do you like that? That it doesn't generally affect, that you're viewing that window as one frontage. And the architect on the council is saying, but wait, it's less than two feet. And so the question is, do we want to hear the language? And then I suppose, if I'm correct, what I think I heard you say is, then if we want it, if a majority of the council wants that new language, then you would take it away, discuss, amend, or, you know, make sure it's all good.
We could take a recess and I could work with the planning director.
I mean, I think something like, with the exception of Muntin's three inches or less, or something like that, is all that needs to be.
I feel like then what's the definition of glass areas? What's that question? But anyway, if the city attorneys...
I should also note that if you're hearing from the planning director, who, you know, that it's de minimis, and it's not going to impact, and this provision only applies for six months, that, you know, this is on the record.
Okay.
That this is our interpretation. So I don't believe that it's necessary.
Okay.
We can certainly provide that clarification. But you've now heard on the record from your planning director, who is interpreting it. I agree with him. That change is de minimis. You know, I just don't know if it's really necessary.
I'm okay with that. Again, I'm just trying to protect them from, you know, something coming back to haunt them.
And Mayor, I can just provide the brief reason. And that's, that architectural feature is an integral part of that window unit. And so it, to me, is not a separate glass area for that purpose. Really, the intent is to prevent sections of wall or other non-window components from providing a barrier between the window areas.
Now that we've heard a plurality of dominity. Councilmember Beer, did you, so by Councilmember Bowles' leave, I'll be happy to recess or not?
No, I don't think we need to. I think we can proceed.
So again, I do have comments before a motion is made?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. And for me, I've been following along with this story since the first time they were brought before planning commission. And from that moment, there have been factors that have weighed heavily in my deliberative process every step of the way. In general, I feel strongly, though, what we're doing tonight is not good governance to the point that I'm almost inclined not to press the yes button. Because in general, I feel like it is not good practice to spend years making standards for everyone in Pacifica, and then change them to accommodate one business for whatever reason. That being said, it's not lost on me that many people over many years have poured out to tell me what an asset this particular business is. And it's also not lost on me that through the best intentions of standards that hopefully would apply to all businesses involved, there are times when through the best of intentions, it doesn't cover everyone we would hope it would. And so in this instance, we're making this accommodation, apparently, and God knows the tally hasn't been taken yet. But in this instance, we apparently are making an accommodation for a particular business. And while I will be voting yes tonight, I just want to be on the record saying that I do not feel like this is good governance practice. And with that, if someone would like to make a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to introduce by title only and waive further reading of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica Amending Section 4-16.03 Windows and Window Coverings of Chapter 16, Title IV, Cannabis Public Safety License of the Pacifica Municipal Code and Filing Adoption of the Ordinance Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act (SEQA).
Mayor Potem?
Second.
Motion and a second. If there's no further deliberation, please vote.
With the motion made by Councilmember Beer and seconded by Mayor Potem Vardalas, item number eight passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess, 11-minute recess, and reconvene at 9:20. We're reconvening at 9:23. We wound up having to fix a slight technological snafu, so it all worked out well. So that brings us to item number nine. Under consideration, appointments to the Library Advisory Committee, Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, Open Space and Park Land Advisory Committee, and Economic Development Committee. Proposed action, move to appoint two to Library Advisory, specifying term for each. Move to appoint two full four-year terms for emergency preparedness. Move to appoint one applicant to Open Space and Park Land Advisory for a partial term expiring 2027. And move to appoint applicants to the Economic Development Committee for two full four-year terms to expire October 2027, and one partial term to expire October 2024. terms to expire October 2027, and one partial term to expire October 2024. Staff report?
Mayor and councilmembers, at the meeting on August 28th, the City Council directed staff to open recruitment for two at-large voting member positions on the Library Advisory Committee, focusing on the segment of the community represented by youth under age 18. Recruitment notices and recruitment flyers for the Library Advisory Committee focused on youth under age 18. They were posted on the city's website on September 7th and shared to the Jefferson Union High School District Superintendent's Newsletter, the Terranova College and Career Center, the Terranova Library, the Oceana High School Library, the Tiger Newsbytes Newsletter, the Youth Advisory Board, and the Pacifica Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Social Media, as well as our usual inclusion on Nextdoor and in Connect with Pacifica newsletter. City also recruited for Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, and Economic Development Committee, expiring terms and vacancies. These were also posted on the city's website, published in the Pacifica Tribune. And the application deadline was September 22nd, later extended to September 29th. The deadline for the LAC applications was September 29th. The city received seven timely applications from youth under age 18 for the Library Advisory Committee, three timely applications for the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, two timely applications for the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, and five timely applications for the Economic Development Committee. Some applicants indicated interest in multiple committee and commission recruitments. The list of applicants under consideration for each of the committee and commissions are attached to the staff report in the agenda, and I can bring those up on screen for you as you deliberate. I'm happy to answer any questions from council members and invite you to deliberate on coming to consensus on nominations for the applicants for these committees and commissions as stated in the agenda. For the Library Advisory Committee, these terms for youth are unspecified at this time, so I would also need the named applicant as well as the expiration for the term that is being considered.
And for the sake of clarity, probably recommended we take these one committee at a time, one motion at a time, yeah?
That's what we've typically done, yes.
Does anybody have questions of staff? If not, we'll turn it over to public comment. I have no cards at this time. Anyone wishing to speak, now's your opportunity. Emily, anyone with a raised hand? Going once, going twice. Closing public comment, bringing it back to council for deliberation. I figure process-wise, we'll do the same tally leading to consensus of motion as we have in days past, unless there's any other ideas how to tackle it? Is if everyone's prepared to go through their list of preferred folk? I know that especially during taking the tally of library advisory committee members, I'll be taking a moment to speak about how difficult it was for me to come to, only picking two. Councilmember Bowles, if you want to kick us off?
Sure. And, I mean, just to add to what you're saying, it was so wonderful to see this many applicants from our youth for this position. And this is really hard because we want all of you. And you all have something to contribute. And if your name is not chosen today, please don't take that personally and please find other ways to be involved because your voices are really important. That being said, I'd like to name Annabelle Phillips and Maya Sinapulis.
I concur.
I do want to take a moment to say that this really was rather difficult. And on paper, any of you would have been welcome. And five wound up showing up for the interview process. That helped me narrow it down. But just on paper, it all looked good. And then when I had the opportunity to interview the five of you, it became immediately apparent that I did not want to choose between the five of you. There are instances in which a choice is readily welcome, and there are others in which I really don't want to choose, and this is one of those instances. So thank you for being interested in your local government. This is not the end of your opportunities to raise your voice, to... If you are not selected, please do show up at these meetings. They're public meetings. You can follow along, and there are times during the meetings designated specifically for you to give feedback, comment, and to be a part of the process. And what's more, you will likely have opportunity to be looped into the greater process of which these meetings and being a part of the board is just one. So do please continue to show up, as you already have begun to. With that, Annabelle and Maya were the two that I had as the two I think should be appointed. Councilmember Vardalas?
Yes, and one-year terms?
And one-year terms. Good.
Yes, so I also wanted to say how it's just wonderful to have young people want to be involved in our city government. And I wasn't there, but I was listening on the phone. And so I really wanted to see them. Anyway, so I would like Amelia Fisher and Annabelle Phillips. Those would be my choices. But having said that, you all were great. And yeah, like the mayor said, please come to the meetings because that's where you can learn about what's going on, and then you can participate that way for sure. So please, please come to the meetings.
That having been said, would anyone like to make a motion? Councilmember Beckmeyer?
I move that we appoint Annabelle Phillips and Maya Sinapulis, each to a one-year term, to the Library Advisory Committee.
Second?
Motion and a second. Please vote.
And with the motion made to appoint Annabelle Phillips and Maya Sinapulis to the Library Advisory Committee for one-year terms, motion made by Councilmember Beckmeyer and seconded by Councilmember Bowles, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Back to the other boards. Who are our top two for emergency preparedness? Mary, you want to go first on this one?
Sure. Remy Tan and Evelyn Taverna.
Sue?
Yes. Yes.
To Remy and Evelyn. Okay. I too had Remy and Evelyn as my top two.
I actually had Pete and Evelyn as my top two. And it was simply because of their expertise and their work in the field.
Yeah, and I'm currently serving on the committee with Pete and Evelyn, and I like them too, so.
Okay, so I have five for Evelyn, three for Remy, and two for Pete. Sarah, is that what you have?
Yes.
Can we maybe talk about open space?
Should we deliberate a little bit more?
Yeah, or talk about open space because Remy's name is also there.
And talk as we like.
I think what you said...
Through the chair.
Sure.
Through the mayor. Are we taking them one at a time? Or do we want to revert and talk about more than one at a time?
I was comfortable taking one at a time, but if you all think that we need more conversation around the plurality...
I'd like to change what I said.
Okay. We haven't voted. And a motion hasn't been made. We're in discussion.
So I'd like to have Pete and Evelyn.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes more sense to me, too.
Okay. Consensus then seems to fall with Pete and Evelyn if that's the case. And if anyone would like to make a motion or discuss further?
I move that we appoint Pete Balustreri and Evelyn Taverna to emergency preparedness.
Second?
It's a motion and a second. Please vote.
The motion made by Councilmember Mayor Protam Vardalas to appoint Pete Balustreri and Evelyn Taverna to the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, seconded by Councilmember Bowles, passes unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to OSPPAC. Going back and forth. You want to start this time, Kristi?
I would like to nominate Remy Tan for OSPPAC.
I would like to nominate Christian Almaguer for OSPPAC.
I've got Christian Almaguer. Sue?
Remy Tan.
Remy Tan.
Okay, so we have three for Remy Tan and two for Christian Almaguer. If anyone would like to make the motion?
Before we do that, I'd like to speak on why I made that choice. And again, it's to do with qualifications. I think that the work that Christian Almaguer has been doing in communities over the hill would be very pertinent to the work that needs to be done here. And he is studying urban planning, so I felt like he was a good fit.
I quite agree. Of the candidates, and I saw he was on both, I thought he actually had more OSPPAC chops at a glance, but I think he'd be good on either committee.
Yeah, and I just want to remind the council members who were there that Christian actually expressed a preference for the Economic Development Committee. And that Remy Tan's also been deeply involved in understanding our HPD and as a planning commissioner, too, you know, as OSPPAC is reviewing some projects.
I'll entertain further discussion or if someone would like to make a motion?
I move that we appoint Remy Tan to the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
I heard the motion by Councilmember Bowles, and I didn't catch the second. Was that Beer? Councilmember Beer? To appoint Remy Tan to the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee for the partial term to expire May 2027. And the vote passes. Three in favor, two opposed, with those in opposition Beckmeyer and Big Stick.
Mary, start with you for EDC.
Yeah, absolutely. I would... I think LJ Jones for the full term, Edward Ochi for the partial term, and Shawn Thompson for a full term.
Sue?
I'll pass.
Okay. I too had LJ Jones, Edward Ochi, and Shawn Thompson, I hadn't considered, but I'm happy to go along with Mary's recommendation.
I want all four of them. I want LJ and Ed and Shawn and Christian.
Me, too.
And so if I had the power at this moment, I would, you know, move that we add one seat to the committee because he's that good, Christian. So this is a really hard one for me. Really hard. I am noting that there is a partial term that we're appointing to, and it expires in a year. Is that right, city clerk?
Partial term, yes, expires in October 2024.
I can go if you're still thinking.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate LJ and Jones and Edward Ochi for the full terms and Christian Almaguer for the partial term.
Say that one more time for me. Oh, so LJ for full, and then who what?
And Edward Ochi for full and Christian Almaguer for partial.
And so if I'm going to... Can we deliberate?
Yeah.
I just want to really let folks know that the work that Shawn Thompson has done and is continuing to do is really important for the Economic Development Committee.
Yeah, and I don't have that sense. I mean, you guys are on the committee with them, so I really appreciate hearing from you. And LJ's been there for six months, right? And Ed has been coming to meetings. So anyway, I'd love to hear your perspective on all three.
Well, like I said, I want all four. LJ was appointed to the short seat last time, and in the short time that he's been on, and I think it was a year. Was it a city clerk? Has it been one year that LJ has served on economic development? Or two? Or just six months?
I would need to check the records for that. I don't know off the top of my head.
It's really short. And it... But my point, here's my point. In the short amount of time that he's been there, he's done an amazing amount of work with looking at and working with another committee member on mapping points of interest and things like, but bringing a kind of a Google map or electronic mapping function so that A, it can be easily changed, and B, it can be responsive, which I was really impressed with. So that's why I would agree with LJ for a full term. I agree. Ed has been attending meetings and has contributed mightily as a community member, expressing his interest and, you know, demonstrating his ability. And therefore, I would support Ed for a full term as well. Which then leaves Christian and Shawn in my calculus for a partial term. One of the things that I'm reminded of, and I don't know, Councilmember Beer, if you heard the comments at the very, 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 very end of the talking, you know, as everyone's sort of, you know, that we're done now with all the questions, but the person is starting to leave. And I don't remember if it was you or the mayor that mentioned how enlightening or encouraging it was that two of the people that interviewed, who are seated, both asked, did Ed apply? And then at the point at which he was departing, when Shawn Thompson was leaving the room, he said, "I really like working, serving on EDC. I think we're doing great things, even if I'm not part of it going forward." And I was like, whoa. I mean, does that mean he likes Ed that much? Right? So I was... I've been mulling all of this. But I agree with your statement, Mary, that Shawn has served well, was instrumental in bringing forward the blues and brews. I'm looking forward to some spirited conversation on that topic, should Ed end up on the committee and Shawn stay on the committee, because I'm not sure there's universal thought that that was exactly the most beneficial for an EDC point of view. I think it was important, personally. And so blah, blah, blah. I think I'm really willing to go with Shawn for the partial and looking forward to another appointment cycle very soon.
And?
Consensus.
Okay, so I definitely heard that our top three vote getters are Jones, Ochi, and Thompson. I think what I heard was a full for Jones and Ochi and a partial for Thompson. City clerk, either can you validate my supposing, or we can just leave it to more deliberation to work out the particulars?
Can I just... I'm sorry. I was just remembering something that Ed said at the meeting, that he wasn't totally sure he wanted it either, right?
So are you thinking Ed for partial?
So maybe Ed should be the partial, and that gives him the shorter term to decide if he wants to reply.
That's what I think so, too.
Oh, I like that.
I think we just came to consensus. A motion when we're ready to do so, please.
I move to approve LJ Jones for a full, full term, Edward Ochi for a partial term, and Shawn Thompson for a full term.
Second?
Christian, come back next time.
Christian, come back. Christian, come back.
So I'm appreciating that we had more people than the slots available each and every time. For anybody who was not voted in this round, please do keep applying. We are grateful that you took the time to interview to begin with, and just because we did not have enough spaces to accommodate you this time doesn't mean we don't want you to come back, interview again, so that we can place you on the next round. We have a motion and a second, please vote.
A motion made by Councilmember Beer to appoint LJ Jones to the full term for Economic Development Committee, Shawn Thompson to the full term, and Edward Ochi to the partial term, seconded by Mayor Protam Vardalas. The vote passes unanimously.
So that brings us to the last item on the list. I did want to adjourn in honor of Hal Ash, and knowing that he has contributed substantially to our community over many decades, I invite councilmembers to say any words they might wish to before we adjourn. If you want to.
I will say that Hal Ash was one in a million. His roots in this community, I mean, I would, I just loved to hear stories about him, about Hal and Barbara, and how they met. And the wanderin' played in, and I think the Rose Room, but I'm not sure, meant decades of service and being a vibrant part of this community, and such a kind man, great sense of humor, great cook. And it's just, you know, he had a long and, and wonderful life in Pacifica, and I, I wish everyone could live forever, and they can't. That said, I know he was quite ill toward the end, and I hated the thought of him in pain or in any way suffering, because he just was a stalwart. And I'm telling you, if it was a mental, you know, push-through and he could have made it go away, he would have. So I love the man, I love his family, and, and it, it makes me sad that he's gone, and I, I wish all the support for his family. Ron, his son, serves on North Coast County Water District Board, and Jeff, Jack Brigette at the last meeting made a plea and a comment at the end of the meeting for prayers and support for Hal and for the family. And then I was just so sad on Saturday to hear that he passed. But he was a wonderful man, and he has a wonderful family. So all the support to Barbara and to Ron and his sister Denise, and the grandchildren, and, and he'll be missed.
So I'll echo it. I didn't know him as well as you clearly did. Except that, thinking of Almar Station and going there for many, many years, and serving he and his wife safely for many, many years, and it has been a considerable hub of our community for a very long time. And Hal, thank you for, for making that hub of our community what it has been, and I'm grateful that you're no longer in pain. In the memory of Hal Ash, we adjourn.